Item number five, approve this through minutes of July the 8th, 2013.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Is there any new business? Item number seven, announcements.
I guess I should announce, I've got a bridge closure right now on 4180 Road, on the backside of Clermore Lake, we're working on the bridge back there, it will be closed all week.
Okay. Number eight, unfinished business, discussion possible action regarding the maintenance agreement between Genesis of Oklahoma LLC and Rogers County Board of Commissioners for the treasury. The citation was tabled from July the 8th. Who's speaking on that one?
They never did bring up anything like that.
Okay. Motion to table for another week? No action, what do you gentlemen want to do here?
I'd like to have somebody go down and get the treasure.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Item number 11, roads and bridges, resolution for project agreement for Wingingon Causeway, C O R D 6604C, approximately 5.8 miles west of State Highway 28. Project number E R S T P 166C. E R State Job Piece number 25524 by and between Rogers County and the Oklahoma Department of Transportation. Mr. Delozer?
This is on the Causeway project on the northeast side of the bridge. It's been a long going thing with trying to get this project put together with federal highway, ODOT. It's just about ready to bid, the funds are there, motion to approve.
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
I guess that, there's quite a few.
Sure.
Item number 14, utility permits, number one, town of Inola, boring crossing Highway East 590 Road, approximately 2.24 miles west of East 590 Road and State Highway 88 junction, further described as 2617 feet west of the southeast corner of Section 32, Township 20 North, range 17 East, Rogers County. Gentlemen, you might forgive all these together.
You're fine.
Number two, the town of Inola is boring crossing Highway East 590 South on ramp to State Highway 88, approximately .01 miles west of East 590. That is also in District 3. Number three, town of Inola boring crossing Highway or local road, East 590 North on ramp, State Highway 88. .01 miles west of East 590 Road on State Highway 33 and State Highway 88 junction, further described as 1,400 feet west and 265 feet north of southeast corner of Section 32, Township 20 North, range 17 East, Rogers County. Number four, town of Inola boring across County Highway 590, approximately 01, .01 miles west of 590 and State Highway 88. Further described as 1,400 feet west of the southeast corner, Section 32, Township 20 North, range 17 East. And number five, AT&amp;T Oklahoma, boring, pushing, overhead crossing, and other description to parallel County Highway Local Road North 170 East Avenue, approximately a half mile east of East Pine and North 170 East Avenue, further described as the southwest corner, Section 26, Township 20 North, range 14 East, Rogers County District 3. I'll make a motion to approve. Utility permits 1 through 5.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, do we have anything under claims?
No.
Item 16, blanket purchase orders?
We have blanket purchase orders, yes.
Do you read those, please?
Emergency management calm data for fuel, $150. District 3 to R S Auto Parts for various equipment, parts and supplies as needed, $500. District 3 to Walmart for various office supplies, $100. District 3 to American Waste Control for the Inola yard as needed, $2070. District 3 to Lowe's for various parts, supplies and tools as needed, $500. District 3 to American Waste Control for the Clermore Yard, $690. That's all I need.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
If we could go back to item eight, unfinished business. Are you here on that?
Yes, I'm agreeing with you.
Other questions on this?
We have a document, I think I would have my own on it, remember off the top of my head?
Do you have the...
Yes, there's a few changes that needs to be made.
Oh, okay.
Yes, I've been on vacation, so I haven't been able to take care of it. I just got back today, so I need name change from Rogers County Treasurer to the Board of County Commissioners in care of Rogers County, behalf of Rogers County Treasurer. And then I need to get a timeframe agreement from start date to end date.
Can you do that next week?
If you want to take that...
If you could table it a week and give her a chance to do that, I'm sure that she can get that done in a week and we can move on with it.
Okay, motion to table for one week?
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried, table for one week.
Okay, item 19, just item number one, update by B K L Incorporated Flint Co. Regarding Courthouse and 911 Projects. Mr. Fay?
Good morning, 911 Centers going well, we turned on the HBAC last week. We're doing some painting inside there, running calls to paint some tabling. E O C projects started and we're doing some electrical work over there right now. Also do some careful work over there today. And all I got.
Questions? All right, thanks, sir. Item number two, discuss possible action regarding approval disapproval of the resolution accepting beneficial interest in the Rogers County Enhanced 911 Trust Authority on and of behalf of Rogers County, Oklahoma. Mr. Ormsen?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, sir.
The 911 Advisory Board is here to present to you the 911, the Ask 911 Public Trust. And the, it needs to be, if it's going to be going forward, an operating trust, it needs to have the county as a beneficiary, accept a beneficial interest in that trust. In addition to that, three towns in the county have agreed to also be beneficiaries of the trust. The towns of Pudlegah, Talaw, and Chelsea. Once the authority is, is in existence, and that's assuming that the county does accept a beneficial interest, there is a meeting planned on Thursday for the first organizational to elect officers and pursue the provision in the future of 911 services. We have, and you'll see also on the next agenda is appointment of trustees. We know who six of them are, we have one blank right now that needs to be filled, and that's the sheriff's designate. We need to know who that individual is.
Richard Jerris Mill.
Jerris Mill, all right, does he happen to be here, Sheriff? Good, 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 okay. So we've got, we've got all seven here, other than Kelly, who's already signed. And so assuming you all would agree to this, not, you're not there yet, they're all here. Any questions? Commissioner?
Mr. Ormsen, we have a trust with the criminal justice. Is this trust invention any different from that one? That puts all the responsibility, all the indebtedness, all the short payers on the Board of County Commissioners. Does this change this indenture?
No, sir, no. This indenture is different in that the Rogers County Criminal Justice Authority has all of the cities and towns, or almost all of them, beneficiaries. Right now, the Ask 911 Authority only has three towns who have been beneficiaries. Now, as far as, I'm not sure your question, but I mean, just because this authority is, is, would be, or if it is established, really changes nothing just by creating an authority. For it to go forward and actually provide 911 services, it would have to have actions taken by the, by you, the Board of County Commissioners, because right now, you own the building, you own the equipment, the employees work for you. And 911 would be, but for the authority, continue to be operated by, by the county.
Okay, so you know, in our criminal justice authority, we took the vote to not charge the city and towns for then the housing of their inmates. And then we came down to the end of the year this year, and we had a shortfall, and we had to make up that shortfall. Are we in the same thing with this also? I mean, is there any responsibility to these towns and mayors that will help, and by them being a part of this, will help the county pay the bill? Do you have any money, that's what I'm asking?
The authority has money.
Okay, so no money?
It has no money.
Do they have to put money in?
All the revenue involving 911 is coming to the county.
Do they have to put any money into it?
The county?
Yeah, for this 911 center.
The authority, right now, if it's, if it's, if it's established, has nothing. It has nothing, will have nothing unless the county allows it to.
Okay, so do we end up...
Do we end up the same way we did this past year, with the county on the hook for paying
the bills?
The county's already on the hook. As regards to the jail, there's a constitutional and statutory obligation for the county to provide a jail for, for the citizens of Rogers County. There is no law that requires the county to provide ambulance services, but upon its own, has elected to do so by the vote of people, to create the revenue that comes from the landlines. But the county does not have to provide that service, so, and I'm, so I'm just assuming for, for the, for the 911 to be in a similar situation with the jail authority, it would have to be running the 911. And receiving all the revenue in that connection, and saying, gentlemen, we've got a budget here, we need more money to run a 911, and we don't have enough. Well, the county at that point could either, and the city beneficiaries, the town beneficiaries, could either agree to subsidize 911, so it could continue to operate, or it could say, no thank you, we're just tired, this is where I'm living.
Should you discuss that?
As to 911, you would not legally have to subsidize it.
Okay, would you discuss that with each town and each official that could possibly be required to subsidize it, or at least ask to subsidize it?
Any beneficiary right now has, three of, all they have, all they will have, and this is true with the jail authority, contributed is $1, $1.
But, the, I think, I think what Mike's getting at, or coming around to, is the town, the difference here is the jail trust, the towns don't have to pay the jail trust. But in this, for dispatching, it's a service. For dispatching, they're, they're going to be charged for the service.
In this case, what's envisioned, and it's in the trust indenture, is that, forget who's the beneficiary, I'm a beneficiary, the authority will be providing 911 dispatch services to whoever contracts with it to provide the services.
For a fee.
For a fee, yes, sir. That's, that's already anticipated and part of the deal. Now, the jail authorities would like to do it a different way, but that's, but that's not the way this is establishing from the beginning.
Hold on, so on the forefront, we're gonna go down this road, like we've gone on the other. This is establishing that the services are provided from the regional 911 center? Everybody understand?
Everybody understands if they're gonna receive 911 dispatch services, they're gonna have to contract with whoever provides it.
Okay, and we're not going back and doing a vote of the board to change it, so we don't charge. Services provided, there is a fee.
Has to be.
Yeah, the fee's always, the service is always, the 911 is always gonna be charged by somebody.
No, but the indenturement said otherwise in the criminal justice authority, and we vote against it, I'm just saying, so if we start out on the right foot this time, that this is a service, and there won't be a fee.
That's, that's, that's definitely my understanding, in fact, I do not believe the financial model of 911 would allow it to, will allow to even operate without, without revenue by contract from those who receive the service.
And any shortfall will be made up by who?
Whoever, if, if there's a shortfall, then frankly, the 911 authority, assuming it has assumed all of these obligations and assets and employees, I mean, I don't know where you're going with that, but, but if there's a shortfall, and the authority can't continue to operate 911 without some money, they're gonna have to request subsidies, or raise their fees, or do something.
Well, you know, what I'm going at is the indenturement that says that the Board of County Commissioners will make up a shortfall in the jail authority, so does this say the same thing?
Keep in mind though, this is not the same to jail authority, because the county has to provide a jail, they don't have to provide 911 dispatch services. So the county could theoretically walk away with no liability on 911, theoretically. But there's a practicality, you built a building, you bought, you bought equipment, you have employees, you kind of have an investment in this whole, whole thing.
And for the health and safety of the people of this county.
Absolutely, yes, sir.
That's the main thing here.
Very good point, yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I do.
Mayor Holland?
Are you telling me, of course, I'm on the criminal justice authority, all right, are you asking the towns if they do get in trouble financially, or are you going to come back to the towns and ask them to subsidize this? And then what method, how you ask them to subsidize it?
Well, that's getting way ahead of everything, Mayor, that's, that's...
We're trying to start this out, right? We don't want to have us...
I'm responding to...
Down the road, asking us later if they did with the criminal justice authority.
I'm responding to why this, that they never ever have. Theory, right, how we're just creating an authority, that if the county commissioners later decide to do so, well, the authority then will, will then operate a 911. And, and the idea is that existing revenues and money coming from contracts from those who are receiving the service will be sufficient for it to operate. That's the idea. But any, but in a way, it's, it's, and it is, it's kind of governmental slash business, operating a business. So the businesses could be providing 911 services, dispatch services, to those who contract. And if that business doesn't have enough revenue to operate, it's gonna have to get revenue someplace, it's gonna continue to do business. Now, just like any other business, where do we get more revenue? Well, we raise the rates on our contracts. That's not enough. Okay, it's a quasi, it's a governmental slash business, I'm just saying, what it would like, what it would likely do is say, county commissioner, town of Pudlegah, we are requesting some help, but you don't have to.
Okay, so it is not mandatory that we have to do that, you can tell them to ask for help, but it is, it is not mandatory that we have to give them.
Yeah.
Okay, also, there's one other little question I have that I posed before, was that if we're unhappy with the charges of the 911, those are not set yet, I understand?
Yes, sir.
That if we are not happy with the charges, or dispatching, if they do consider excess of what we were currently paying, that we have the option to bottom out of that, is that correct?
Yeah, and I think, if I were putting myself in Mayor Holland's shoes, on the hat of the town of Pudlegah, okay, I would, I would, I would know that you would have no obligation to subsidize 911 authority at all. You do not, will not have any obligation. And you're only obligated to pay for that service once you agree to pay in a contract. And if you think you're trying too much, you don't sign the contract. But we're happy with the contract this is presented, but I'm looking real personal at this little row here, and... You've got no obligation to, the natural obligation going forward, other than what you signed, what's on the contract? And from that, that matter, that's true with the county, except that the county has a heck of a lot of investments, has all these assets and employees.
What this thing, I'm gonna speak up here, what this thing's been about from the very beginning is the best service for the people of this county. This isn't anything the Commissioners trying to push a 911 center, this, all this has ever been from the beginning, is what's best for the people of this county. And that's, this service has always been talked about as that. There, it's been twisted, it's been sped, it's been everything, on different ways on what we're trying to do here. But this is, this is simply just putting a 911 center together to dispatch for the people of this county, and this opting in, opting out, I don't care, you don't have to be involved in this center. This isn't for, if, if you don't want to be in it, you don't have to be in it. But it's to, to try to do what's best for the people of this county, and that's all this is about. If you're not interested in being in it, don't, don't join it, that's pretty simple. That's what I've said from the beginning, if it's something you feel bad about, don't join it, because we're, we're going to do, we're going to strive to try to do something here that's never been done in this county, and that's put a 911 center together, where everybody's dispatching is the same throughout the county, and then everyone can, can talk. If there's an emergency that this entire county's in, they're gonna be able to talk to each other without having to do a lot of patching, find radios that you can carry around, and all of that stuff. Like radiators.
Chief Thatcher?
Yes, sir, one, let everybody know too, it's not just the towns and cities, it's also the fire districts, fire departments, and entities like that. We're willing to come on board, you know, and we want the people to know that it's just not towns and cities, because we have a vested interest in this also, not just as taxpayers, but also as entities and end users of this center. And this is not gonna do anything but better the service that we're getting right now. And I'm not saying anything bad about Chelsea, but it's gonna bring everything into one center, where you don't have to transfer this call out to that entity, or this call out to that entity, it's just gonna bring it all into one area, and make the dispatch a little faster. And so therefore, it's just not the cities and towns, it's also the fire districts and people like that also.
And ambulance.
And I think, and ambulance, and I think there's a potential for growth on this center down the road, and that's something we need not forget, so.
Anything else? Do you have anything else, Mr. Ormsen?
Uh, no, sir, not on this agenda, you have a resolution before you, that if you, for you to adopt or not adopt, that would, would cause the county to be a beneficiary of this Rogers County Enhanced 911.
I make a motion to approve agenda item number two.
Second.
Delozer, I mean, Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay. Item number three, appointment of trustees of Rogers County Enhanced 911 Trust Authority.
Commissioners, I emailed to you a copy of the latest draft of the trust indenture, and it had changes in it, and those changes reflect the trustees. And the ones that are named in the indenture are Commissioner Delozer, Mayor Holland, Chief Puckett, Kelly Deal, and Chief Ashley, and Mayor Bowle. And the other one will be Richard Jerris Mill.
It's, it's Chief Bowle.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Here's the mayor's, here's the mayor's.
And all you need is a...
The indenture requires that those, that all trustees be appointed by the Board of County Commissioners, and the law requires any such trustees to be appointed. These are suggestive trustees, most of whom have been involved for quite a while, in connection with the establishment of this trust.
Is this a, like a one-year term, or how does that...
It staggers, uh, 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 three, this indentures, by the way, that there will be two more trustees. One, a chief of police of a beneficiary, a town or city, and the other a mayor of a, of a city or town that is a beneficiary. And so therefore, there would be, there would be nine trustees, right now we're appointing seven, but all nine have stagger terms. Three have one year, three have two years, and three have three years, and thereafter, everybody has a three-year term.
Okay. Any questions on, discussion on those?
Nope.
Pointies? Make a motion to accept that list that you named off.
A second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem? Motion's been carried and approved.
And I want to thank everybody that's interested in being on this, this is a big step, it's good for Rogers County, and I think it's going to work, yes, sir.
I have two questions. One is liability to trustees, who is personally liable to answer that, to trustees, is there any liability?
I assume the trust will, if it gets to that point.
Does the trust meeting when?
Thursday.
Thursday morning.
Thursday morning, what time?
10:00.
Right now there is...
Thursday at 10:00. We wanted to hurry and pass that before you changed your mind.
I have one other question.
We'll discuss that.
If the trustee cannot attend a meeting, can an appointee vote for that trustee?
No. And trustee, only the trustee can vote, and the trustee cannot...
As a jail, as a jail trustee, he has...
They can't, can they vote his, his vote, if he sends a vote?
No.
Okay.
The trustee's called, the trustee cannot delegate the vote.
Okay.
All right. While I'm here, all those who, those that you're going to be trustees or are trustees, I've got lots of signatures for you. I'm not sure how you do that, and I need a nuttery, Christine, to...
Mr. Ormsen? Ms. Ormsen?
Yes, sir.
She only makes noise since she's authorized all her signatures.
Oh, super, okay, okay. I duly present you out of a room where you can get everybody's sign up.
There's office space right next to it. It was completely, it was all in there.
Can we do that out, as an agenda item? Can we do that out, as an agenda item?
Sure.
Okay, is that all you have, Mr. Ormsen?
Chairman, that's all that I have.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
Would you like a picture with the trustees before they all leave? I can take one.
I can right now.
I doubt that they're gonna leave.
Okay, item number four, resolution for lease purchase agreement for county road machinery and equipment for, by the Oklahoma Department of Transportation and Board of County Commissioners. Ms. Delozer?
I believe these are on the revolving fund, this is just a yearly, we have to renew this every year, this is on the, yes, on the county revolving fund, which is through the state, you can buy equipment, and I think there's one 3% charge, and after that, it's, you just pay the...
Motion to approve?
Second.
Backer?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halem?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number five, resolution 2011-15 for lease purchase agreements for 19 sheriff's vehicles between the Board of Rogers County Commissioners and Welch State Bank.
This is the same thing, we just have to renew all the lease purchase agreements per fiscal year. Now, some time and I can only even verify everything's correct.
Motion to approve? Is this 2014-15, is that correct?
It's 1314.
That's why I'm asking.
Oh, yeah, it says 1315.
Yeah, we've started the resolution numbers, because it's fiscal year 14.
Okay. Second.
The 15 is the number on the resolution.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I got a little lost in that, it would be fiscal year 2013, 2014.
Correct.
Yeah, that's resolution number... Yeah, that's resolution number.
It's the resolution number that threw them off.
Designating it Resolution 2014 would seem to indicate the action takes place in 2014. Uh, I'm just pointing that out to you. I think it's, um, confusing. We would normally do resolutions for the year that we're in, um, with some specificity, so that's, that's my two cents here.
So you think when you change the resolution number to 2013...
Dash 15.
Dash 15? It is taking place in 2013, yes. Can we make that, uh, exception?
I'd have to change it to a higher number.
Nelson?
Okay, I'm gonna get this. We usually go by fiscal year. When you're doing 13-14, the year that's indicated is a year of June 30th. So, at June 30th, it's gonna be 2014. That's what we're, next June 30th is what we're working on. Uh, I could change it to 2013-14-dash-resolution, whatever that might. Basically, what you've got is 2014 resolution, which is happening in 13 right now, dash 15 is the number of resolutions that we've had so far this year. So thankfully, what you want us to do is make it 2013-14, then Resolution Number 15. Is that basically what you're thinking?
You know, the purpose of a resolution, the purpose of this document is just to satisfy what we're spending taxpayer money for. And certainly, one of the places we have to answer for that is with the state auditor. And I certainly appreciate and respect your, what I would call an expert opinion. I appreciate your input on that. Uh, I, I think we have to be consistent week to week to week when we identify something called a resolution. It's my observation that this is not consistent with how we can be doing things. Uh, and that's my observation.
I'll rescind my motion for one week and make a motion to table for one week so we get that straightened out.
Okay, I, it was my motion.
I rescind the second.
I rescind my motion. And we'll table this for one week and get it, get it done and get it back on.
Okay, so you made a motion to table it for one week and he's seconded it?
Yes, and he made the motion originally.
Right, right, that's the way I have it.
And I rescinded the second.
Okay.
Sorry to ask.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried to table for one week.
Item number six, lease option C, agreement for equipment maintenance, software maintenance, and intel link subscriptions, meter rental by the Board of County Commissioners on behalf of Rogers County Sheriff and Pitney Bowles.
This is just replacement when they finally got moved into the new building, the postage meter went with them. So this is an additional meter that will remain at the jail.
Okay, Robin, did Legal sign this?
Yes, at the bottom.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
A second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Thank you. And number seven, independent contractor agreement by and between the Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County and Stimson Construction, Paul Stimson. That's you, Director Bays.
This was just to have some concrete around the courthouse here.
Did he, is there a price over here?
Uh, no, but it was $1,700. I think there actually is. Did you a couple of prices and they forgets the lowest number.
Questions? Motion to approve.
Thacker?
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, number eight, independent contractor agreement by and between the Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County and Joshua Cantwell, LCSW for Rogers County Jail.
This is a mental health licensed social worker that's going to be coming in and assisting us with diagnosed mental health as well as, you know, alleged mental health patients that we're serving, inmates that we're seeing a huge influx of in the jail. He's going to interview and see whether or not they need further treatment. Or our primary care doctor does not specialize in any sort of mental health. So we're gonna contact with him for help on that.
Was it with us or was it for criminal justice or... We always have issues since the sheriff runs the jail. At the prison. It is, it is again, it's one of those things that historically this county has had an inconsistent approach to who hires who to run the jail, since to provide services in the jail. I think simply put, since the sheriff is running the jail and the sheriff deems it important and necessary to do that, ultimately liability may fall to the county. Running it through the board is probably the best thing to do. On that line, I'd like to take a minute and commend Lieutenant McLemore, the undersheriff, I'm sorry, the sheriff, to commend him as well. This is, this is being very proactive and I just appreciate and commend them taking the opportunity to provide this service. When you look at what's happening in jails across the state right now, this is a very important service and I commend them for doing that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number nine, juvenile detention services agreement by and between Board of County Commissioners and Community Works, Potawatomi County. Is the DA's signature on this one, Robin?
Yes.
You wanna see it? See the front of the price?
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number 10, monthly report of officers for June 2013. Is there a motion? Second.
Thacker?
Aye.
Delosier?
Aye.
Hail?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number 20, announcements regarding county events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments and elected officials as follows. Number one, or A, 911 Administrator, Director Hamilton.
Uh, as we already know, we have a trust board meeting, organizational board meeting, Thursday at 10 o'clock. And then I am meeting Thursday night with the town of Gertigris to explain to them the trust indenture. And that's all I have.
Okay, questions for Director Hamilton? Okay. B, assessor, building operations and maintenance, Director Bays.
We're finishing up, or Sean Armstrong, Armstrong Landscape is finishing up sprinklers day and tomorrow on the south side of the courthouse. And I believe they're gonna try to get some water sprayed on the dirt, soften it up and hopefully start saw this Thursday. That's my understanding of plan there, so. We should be getting the yard kinda put back together, get our barricades and things down hopefully by the first of next week. Hours we've, Butch and myself have gone to work in 10, so I'm taking Monday through Thursday. So we'll have someone here all day so we can still come in and get the trash out beforehand. It's, we start at 6:00. And then, but Butch will be taking the second half, so we still have maintenance here on Friday. So hopefully that gives better service to the courthouse, having somebody here. And as always, we're, we're on call 24/7. So I take the first call and Butch is back up to that. So someone can't get ahold of me, Butch is next in line to get the call after hours. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
County clerk?
I would like to introduce our new payroll clerk, Kelly Stout. Will stand up, survey, continue. Embarrass you thoroughly.
Yes. That's okay.
We'd be messing up our paychecks.
I'd rather them not see my face.
Welcome to the county.
Nothing additional.
Okay, election board, mercy management. Name's gone. HR?
I just have orientation on Wednesday.
Orientation on Wednesday, and what time would that be?
Uh, 9:00 to noon upstairs. I've sent out emails to get all the new hires.
Okay, thank you. IT?
Good morning. I will be installing a backup domain controller this week once the parks appear. It's not the exciting, but a necessary evil. And we'll be installing two more wireless access points in the sheriff's office. And we'll have expanded capability for our Wi-Fi.
All right. Planning commission?
Yes, uh, just giving you an update in regards to INCOG. I represented the county last week at the annual, um, general assembly meeting. It was dull, boring, doesn't really change except for we approved the budget for this coming year for INCOG. Just letting you guys know, we were not as well represented as a community. None of the mayors for Rogers County were there as they were disappointed in that. But in any case, it was still a good meeting and as always, INCOG is progressing and with the county, we progress with it. To give you an update, we are having a meeting today at 11:00 a.m. at 16561 East, 112th Street North, Ol' Wasto 74055, uh, in regards to the fossil creek, uh, the proposed PRD. We will be meeting with the citizens there. Uh, the developer has agreed to end this meeting out there. They hinted at providing cookies, so we hope. I know, if you provide cookies, it should be a great meeting. And one last thing, uh, the Department of Transportation will be having a meeting tomorrow night at 6:00 p.m. at their 100, uh, US 169 office in regards to, uh, the 266 expansion. I encourage everyone who has interest in that area to be there. Uh, it's my understanding that they're only gonna be expanding up to a certain point and not all the way up to the port. It is important for the growth in the county that we extend 266 all the way if possible. So be there, be square.
Larry, after your INCOG meeting, uh, Mr. Kellogg notified me that the city of Claremore is pulling out the blue star, uh, federal.
It's disappointing.
The city's pulling out and you can contact Mr. Kellogg. He's contacted by INCOG.
It's disappointing to hear.
Judicial. An issue extension.
Nothing to report this time.
Sheriff's office.
Nothing, stop.
And treasurer. Item number 22.
I got the sheriff.
Yes, sir.
John, did we get the stuff we asked for?
And I got that late Wednesday. I went on vacation last week, so I'll follow up today.
Okay. So can you have that for the agenda next week?
I should do.
When we do this tape, this, uh, 'cause it has to do with cars.
Yes.
We just tag that with it, we go all in the package and done.
I can do that.
Okay, can you give it, Christine?
Yep.
Public comments and responses from board members. All right. Item number 23, payment of purchase orders from all departments.
This is where Dan says smoke and whiskey out.
I don't know, man, it's all...
How about shoes I can show?
Do you need me for anything, Robin? Okay.
How about me?
You're good, go.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's tight. You're confusing. The resolution tells you. It's gonna come July 1st. But the new resolution's word. You put a number on it. And you're pulling over here. You would have that. Calendar year that you're doing your work. Unless you're telling me, I don't understand.
Hey, Larry, good job up there today.
We start new numbers in July. I do think, so that, so the title simply tells me that's when the action conflicts, calendar year 2013. The purpose of it is whatever you say is body. I would, because when I, if I have a question, I don't sound cheesy, does he renew all those leases? This one? Uh, what do you, would they be, would they be July 2013? Let's go look at what it's like.
I wanna make sure.
I know.
Yeah, okay, thank you. How do we do that? How's it going, young man?
You doing all right?
Good.
Good to see you.
Did Jenny Beverly still out?
Uh, she was standing up.
You used to work the curtain.
Yeah, I used to work. He had to put up with me.
How you been?
All pretty good. Busier than a one-eyed cat watching three moms. I just kinda tried to catch Jenny to pay my insurance.
She was here just a second ago.
I misplaced my, the little thing she sent me, you know?
Yeah.
So I just got the money order in here.
May I give it to her? I make sure she gets it.
If you don't mind. Like I say, I forgot, I can't find the little coupon-like things that she gave me.
Yeah.
Been keeping you out of this gift?
Pretty much, yeah. What about you? You getting all those honeydew stuff?
I was saying, go around that accident.
Yeah, it was terrible. Terrible tragedy.
Yeah, for shame that that happened.
You've already signed.
Well, I'll get out of your way, I know you're busy. Sure good to see you.
Hey, good to see you, Bert.
Take care.
All right, be good, Darrell.
Keep them guys out there, I don't miss.
I'm trying. Be good, Darrell.
Thank you, you too.
It's not as much, it's not as. Are we done? Oh, we still have. That was a relatively short meeting.
That was, oh, I thought that nine-one was done now.
Yeah, if it hadn't been this, like, would have really been.
We would have flown.
Really short.
I love it because these are so flexible.
Hey, what's the, what's the deal back there, man? What, what, what are we doing here?
It's coming.
He's having his photo taken.
Yeah.
Robin, could you do me a favor and go and, I want you to come down here? She normally sits down here and make sure the POs stay straight after their sign.
Hey, you didn't sign all the spots? Yeah, I did. All the spots? Hey, this is for Carol Olson. You got more spots? There's more spots?
There's more spots?
Sure are. Can you give me a receipt that you, uh, received that?
Yep. And notarize it?
Yep, three times.
Who's this? Is this me? Yeah, I think it is.
You're the affiant today. Thank you.
What? Where'd those come from? Actually, it's just this sign here. Just let me know.
They did?
Robin, hand them to me.
Just blind it on the county clerk. Oh, thank you.
Yeah, I'll be there, well, for a little bit. I can't wait to get that on the road. Point out, chief. Nothing. I just want to say thank you. Well, glad to do it. Glad to do it.
Yep. Get him going. She got you going there?
Yeah, got us going.
Does the car ride still over here?
Hey Larry? Do you know if they pulled out of, uh, King Road?
No, I, I can call Brian if I.
Why not about that? Maybe I'll go check a little bit.
I'll see him at eleven o'clock anyway.
I don't have anything funded. Why did they pull out of that? Uh, it's all carried. We've already done the engineering. We already did the engineering. The engineering there? Supposed to be where the commissioners aren't working with people again. That's, that's weird.
What, what exactly are they doing on King Road?
Well, we know where that school is up there.
No, I heard King, I was talking about, I'm talking about Blue Star.
Yeah, he's talking about Blue Star.
Right, right.
They're wanting to widen that out and have some turn lanes, you know, because it's.
Arrow, arrow road.
Yeah, a lot of traffic up there around that school.
Great. How about you? Good. Good to see you. Good to see you. I thought you were here for dinner.
It's a little, you're just not used to that eighty degree weather. It's been in the, you know, nineties.
My, my niece just came back from a trip from Europe. She lives in San Francisco, so last weekend, when that plane crash was in San Francisco, she was in Seattle trying to get home, and it delayed their flight. At least she was on American soil. But it delayed for several hours. She was starting a new position on Monday. She had to go to work in Wells Fargo. In marketing of all places, but they do a lot of marketing. Anyway. You know how tired you are when you're kind of on a trip, when you've been on a plane for nine hours. And then she had to, they would.
It's good to see you. What, I had to cut the gray. It's all gray. I thought I'd try this for a while. No, I can't. I can't do that.
What have you been up to?
Dan, how've you been?
Good, yourself?
Good. Mike? More signatures?
More signatures for both, yes, for both of them. Not that many, only.
Someone stole my pen, and I'm pretty sure it was Nelson. He walked up here and grabbed my pen for some reason. I'll go see if I can borrow one.
Want to get them all lined up, Mr. Orson?
I've got everybody signed. The Shelley is now going through the hard work of getting everything filled in and notarized, there's about a hundred of those.
Now, how hard was that?
I couldn't reach you guys. I didn't know for sure how that was going to go down.
Which one?
I too.
Did you need some of the most, I need your signature on three things.
This is the resolution that's, uh, accepting the beneficial.
Which sealed, the Rogers County seal?
Uh, the, the Rogers County, yes. Rogers County seal, yes. Yeah. There is a blank there as to the resolution number. I just said two thousand thirteen. I didn't know if you remember it or not. I didn't know what that.
Right.
Thanks.
Since that discussion about the resolution number. Does he sign this one, because we may have to change it?
Oh, that's a sixteen, it's the same one, it's the same one. If you don't mind, I will take all those back with me, and then I want to be, and then I'll be sending things back to you. Brenna will be working with you on that, as to getting things filed and getting the right copies to the right places. You're gonna have to do more, yeah.
I do need to do more. I always do that in my office, so it won't dry out.
That's smart.
What do you do with it?
Always make sure I put the cover back on, the seal.
Yeah. Yeah. Although you had a different trip.
No. Haven't reinvented wheel yet. Did he say that bridge was down by Claremore Lake?
Keep this moving here.
I heard you say something, I didn't, I didn't.
I don't know where you're at, Shelley.
Thank you.
Would this one first?
Well, these are all, we haven't got empty since they knew yet.
Oh, really?
And that's going to be sixteen? I'll borrow your pin at sixteen, though.
Yes, yes.
Well, I'm just going to tell her that.
Okay, there you go.
Seal. See, sir.
Oh, I thought it was going to be more.
No, that's it.
Good to see you, sir. Good seeing you, always pleasure.
Now, on this, this is all, this is all authorities stuff.
Okay.
Oh, by the way, I want to ask you this. The authorities got to elect a secretary and a treasurer. It doesn't have to be you.
Don't do it, Robin.
I'm just.
Don't do it.
I'm, I'm just, they're going to ask me that question, who should it be? I'm going to say, well, uh, I don't know. The problem is, when it's somebody different than you, it's harder to get things done. I'm just, I'm just being selfish, but the problem is, you'd have to come to the meetings, and it's way out there, in the lower.
Way out there?
Farther, farther away from here.
Janet's office? In Janet's office?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Someone needs to take the Minister Janet over to that.
Janet takes minutes.
Yeah, yeah.
Everything's housed in our office, anyway.
Yeah, and you don't really even have to be there at meetings, let's think about, but we do it in secretary, some, somebody designed, you know, the official to do stuff. And, and also to file the notices of the meetings. That really, it'd be, anyway, I leave it up to you, but, but.
And to make those deposits for all that money.
Alright, that's, you know, that's, you know, we. This is just step one, you all have inside what you're going to do with it.
That won't be that difficult of a job.
Yeah.
Make all those deposits for them.
You all have inside of what you're going to do with your stuff. Like, for instance. I didn't put on Thursday's agenda, I didn't hire Janet, because we got some money we can't pay. So, you know, I mean, that's, that's, all this has got to be decided, guys, that's all.
And don't forget about your dispatcher, Sherry.
Yeah, that, well, it's, yeah, so I don't know what you want to do, but right now, we just got to trust with, 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 with nothing. Except, 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 except seven trustees.
Where we're going to get it done, we're going to have to do it.
You all have to bring life into it, to, to extend your. So, what do you think?
Good luck, dear.
Would, would you be the secretary of? I, I, they're not even talking about it, I'm just.
Okay.
And we can make, and we can make Janet the assistant secretary. But anyway, uh.
Can I call you about it later? Can I call you about it later?
Yeah, and I wire run it, if you don't want to do it, it's fine.
I just need to.
You might want to talk to Janet about it, too. But I, I, I'll leave, load up your own shirt. Yeah, just let them know. We got them Thursday morning.
Alright, yeah, thank you, sir.
Hi Jim. You know, that works both ways, you know?
Well, I have to, I have to look like this to see through them. No line bifocals.
She's paying you.
I've been working like a.
No, no, no. You guys hired her.
That was disgusting.
I was going to bring a bill Thursday. But then you go authority, assuming I can hire by authority, and I do, I mean, that's up in that. But, but, yeah.
Did you just now get bifocals? Now, I've had them since these, they're just no lines, but.
And you all don't get them any money.
If I'm working like I was doing that, I definitely have to look down constantly and look at.
That's all, what you got to think about. See you.
See you.
Bye-bye, Jim.
Thanks, sir.
Catching up for us from last week.
It was not traveling this one, and probably not this one, but this week's.
I'm pretty sure. Yes, I'm sure.
Um, we should, that, this process.
When I think of Dusty, well, I think about when I was a kid, and I used to come by the house.
Yeah, she, she calls that Dusty, I don't know why she puts that on POs that way, but it's, uh, it's a, we, we prime with that before we.
Right.
Shoot our. I mean, before we chip them in.
You should have started chipping today.
We've done about ten miles.
We've done about nine in one, one edition.
I think altogether, we're going to do about twenty-five. I got about that much on, microsurfacing?
Banks runners, yeah. Are they? We can get with another edition, I'm doing.
They're not going to be here till middle of August, though.
Middle of August?
Yeah.
Still need. Works both ways. Hey, can you get Warren sitting back there where you get the whole? I'm just kidding about the. Still need. I'm just kidding.
Very careful, if we do the far back, you might pick up that balding spot. Okay, I'll find it myself today.
You don't have a balding spot? I don't need it.
You have to polish your hair.
I don't have a spot. You know, the other night, my, my grandson, we brought him some big balloons, balloons that you jump on, you know? He blew one up, and he was over there, he got his grandma, and he was rubbing on her head, and he's pulling up on her hair, it was standing up. And I said, here, come over and try and wipe that, and he. He was on the other, he said, Papa, your hair won't move.
How's the, um, deconstruction over the courthouse coming?
How's the what?
Deconstruction in the courthouse coming?
We're going to go out for bids on that. Very quick, very soon.
Well, I mean, the, I walked in there, they've taken some stuff out, I mean, like, there's even part of the lathe bowl looks like it's been ripped out.
Was that you?
Part of us. I got the exit, exit, a bunch of the exit lots, they're going up there in my warehouse.
I knew you guys were recycling a lot of that stuff.
We've recycled a lot of stuff out there, so far.
I got sinks and stools and urinals, and, uh, water fountain.
Did you get the doors?
I got twenty, twenty doors, and they're going to, I'm going to have to have them cut down and fit, but yeah, they're going to use, they're solid three doors.
I need some of those, no. Are, are there still some there?
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
About two hundred.
Actually, what I need it for is to build work benches for the shop.
Get some of those that are scratched up, 'cause there's still some good ones that could be.
Yeah, I want to build, I need, I just want the solid part of it, we'll put some lanes on it, build work benches out of the shop. And the door knob, it'd be more than a quarter go through.
Actually, the doors I got, I got enough doors to put on all mine, but I haven't got any for anything else.
Hey, Robin. You don't have to come up here, I just need you to get the, we're gonna salvage some of those doors over there, but we want the ones that are already scratched up, so we want to build work benches out of them.
Good tops for a work bench. Will the people that, whenever you made it, whoever, are you guys gonna have it included to take the copper out, so you guys can get the money back on that?
I'm gonna go over that with BJ on the, oh, on the scrap value, that, that's, if you take it out, then they charge you one price. But if, if they get to keep it, then they, they estimate what, estimate, estimate what they think it's gonna be, and then they knock that much off. So, they're, they're taking a chance on not getting as much as they think, or they're taking a chance on maybe, you know, killing a bear, so, uh. That, that's how, that's how they explored it. You know, if it was like an old time courthouse, it had marble floors and, you know, all the wood and all of that kind of stuff.
Mays County's was marble, they had a lot of marble, we don't have any marble over there.
We don't have any asbestos either, so that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. And they fixed, when was that, ninety?
Eighty-four.
Was it eighty-four?
Over here.
When they, they abated that?
I think it was eighty-four, when they did the remodel.
That was a good move, getting it all abated.
Yeah, get it abated.
Your grandson.
Last year. Somebody sign off on those?
They sure do. We got many, many, many of them.
That's good.
Is your grandson talking yet, Kurt?
Yeah. He says Papa's hat a lot.
Oh.
Papa's hat, he says that a lot. I've got one hat that, that I don't wear very often, and he crawls in there and he'll point at it and say Papa's hat. He says, he just goes around saying Papa, I know.
Oh.
I don't know why he does it.
I don't mind.
You get out of it.
Yeah, he just.
He grow out of it for a long.
Papa, Papa.
That's what my grandmother called me.
Mine calls me bo- bopoff.
Bopoff.
Mine probably called me mini yesterday.
Called you what?
You probably think I'm not called a mini, I thought you were.
I just haven't figured out, I just haven't figured out what you do without them. I think they're about the greatest thing God ever put on earth.
No kidding.
You know, seriously, you hear people talking about, I used to think it was silly when you'd hear them say, oh, if I could've had grandkids first, you know, it'd been better. I can tell you what, if I could've cut out the middleman, it would've been, seriously.
That's what your mom and dad were saying.
They said that a lot, but I didn't realize that that was, have I apologized for you to go on the picture?
Yeah, about fifty times.
Okay. That boy loves his Papa.
I wait till it gets a little bit older to go with you all the time, then it really gets fun.
Oh, we took a corner fishing all day, I mean, all day Saturday. Papa, what is this, Papa?
Yeah.
Everything is a question.
And I'm talking about like fifty million of them, Papa, look at that bird.
Is this a new, is this a new batch?
Yes.
Okay, you wanna keep those separate, right?
Yeah, I'm watching when they get to the end.
Yeah, Papa, is that a penguin? No, it's a seagull. Well, what's the difference, it, it looks like a penguin, no, it's a seagull. What do they eat, Papa?
Do you give me penguins?
Big fish? And he on the way home, I, I mean, just comes, he's on the way home, he says, Papa, look, it's a penguin. I looked, where is it? Where is it? He said, right over there, and I, I kept looking over there, and he laughed, oh, it was a trash bag. He did what, he's only.
I got a little, daughter, granddaughter just turned a year, boy, I'll tell you what, now you talk about those, everything, that girl.
We're gonna lose her, we're gonna leave the resolutions of it, like we had it.
We are, okay, cool.
What just threw me off when it said?
Yeah.
Twenty fourteen, fifteen, I'm like, we usually do twenty thirteen, fourteen.
It, it should say thirteen, fourteen, actually. That's the fiscal year.
We're going by the fiscal years, yeah.
Right.
And so it's thirteen, fourteen, year end, the year that's considered the year is the year that ends on June thirty.
That's correct.
Huh?
That's correct.
So, in other words, this would be, we just completed.
Right.
Fiscal year twenty thirteen.
Twelve thirteen, yeah.
Right. And so now, we're in thirteen, fourteen.
Right, it just threw me off, it's got the numbers really different.
And, well, here's the deal.
Blink your eyes, we're gonna be in twenty-six, twenty-seven.
I, I talked to him about it, and here's what he said, well, look, we've already approved all those.
Mean as Mike is, he might.
You see what I'm saying, everything we've done, we'd have to go back, so he said, just leave it like it is, although, he liked it better the whole way.
Yeah, I liked it better the whole way, just because I was used to it, I liked it better than anyway.
Well, anyway. I talked to him afterwards, so.
You done, that it?
Yes, I'm gone, see y'all.
Home, Sonia.
Nelson, you better watch out, or you'll be sitting up here now. Buddy. Buddy, buddy, you're my buddy.
She will say she'll line you right out.
Takes quite a few to line you out, you know, he's the center of attention, that's his title.
Center of attention.
Center of attention.
Here's a better term. Catch all, I'm sure.
Catch all.
Whatever they want to do, they're tied on me.
That's why he sits in the middle, so we can, he can all hear us when we're sitting at our desks.
That's the way these two do me. I like them.
I'm gonna take, oh, well, they moved my desk over, and I liked it a little deal. They had COA, center of attention, so I was gonna change it to S O C O A, slightly offset.
Slightly offset.
Slightly offset, really good.
Well, these are already signed. We're back to.
It isn't one day that the blanket's got, that I had the blanket sitting here, and I had to cast it down, that's what happened. Mr. Iskey didn't realize there was an additional page that needed to be signed, I'll have to have Nelson take this up and have him.
Thank you.
Sonia?
Uh-huh.
That's, uh, bill's eighteen thirty, now you're pulling it to be over a thousand dollars.
Well, when she first did, she never made, so she had to do another P R. For eight hundred.
Okay, so she did.
Yes, yeah, another.
Oh, there's two of them?
Yes.
Wow, the police clothes cost more than money. You see that?
Yeah.
Eighty-six, ninety-five for pair of pants. Shirt sixty-three.
That's cheap.
And then pay eight dollars to cut off the sleeves.
More than that in Tulsa?
Yeah, 'cause he has to wear wool.
Wool, in the sun?
Yeah, it's actually, it's a light red wool, and then they have to be dry cleaned.
Hundred and seventy dollars for one.
Wow, we went up to the Paulinsville Sale Auction Saturday, and they had some sheep with wool, so I was explaining to the kids how that worked, they were just looking at me, but you hadn't got to that in school yet, but they shaved that off and made wool clothes out of it. Our little neighbor girl, she'd never been around farm animals before, and she thought it was better than the zoo, because there's, they have all those baby calves and baby goats and all those cute little animals in there. You going to meeting about the port, about the, say, how we're two sixty-six, standing at that?
When is that?
Tomorrow night, at six o'clock, I believe.
Probably, right.
I sure can.
Another stack right there.
In fact, I just will.
Thank you, sir.
Is there a better discount than needed than there is here? Travel agency?
I don't know, he's used that, I know he's used that.
Travel agency?
What are you talking about?
Going to the sheriff's office.
Travel agency.
Travel agency?
I remember when that was taboo. I don't remember that. What's educated people were talking about?
Your travel agent, Mike, your travel agent.
I couldn't remember when taboo was a cologne.
Was a what?
A cologne.
A cologne?
Yes.
Robin, that tells her age, we used to tell that.
I don't remember, so.
How do you?
Do you remember, Jeanie? Robin?
Oh, Robin remembers.
I wouldn't admit shit if I did.
Jeanie and I are the only ones that don't know what that is.
You guys probably.
We were too poor to have.
You probably don't know what parachute pants are, either.
I was too young.
Too young to remember parachute pants?
I do, no, I remember parachute pants, in the eighties.
I was telling Danny, my daughter can't believe I've got, I've got the CDs from nineteen eighty-four, Garth and George Strait, and I was like, wow, these are so cool.
Parachute pants will never come back in style.
Well, there are still people who wear them, though.
But, nevertheless, they're not in style.
Does it change?
I never had any of those. In fact, I dressed exactly like I do now, except I wore Wranglers instead of sandals.
I used to wear that knit western, remember that, Levi's work made the knit come in knit western, colored, you could get the color, you couldn't get jeans colored.
Oh, yeah. You know, Curtis was bringing back the mullet, and he, when he got it cut off Saturday, he keeps, he keeps filling the back of his hair, or his neck, because it's not there.
Business in the front, party in the back.
Yeah. Some of our little football players, you know, in the little league, when, when he was helping me coach, they went into, to where he gets his hair cut, and they'd ask for the Curtis special, and, and the girl that cuts her hair, she's like, no, you don't want that, oh, yeah, yeah, I want that, I want the Curtis special. And then it kinda died out, you know, after football season, they go over to something else, some boys walked in there the other day, and they said, do you know Curtis Thatcher? And she goes, yeah, I cut his hair once, we want a haircut just like his, and she's like, no, you don't, no, yeah, we really do.
I had that problem too, but I cut like mine.
Did you ever, did you ever see my husband with his mother for thirteen years, and his hair was down the middle of his back?
No, not at all.
Oh, my God, he was. He didn't work well, the ponytail still hung on the bar.
Yeah.
Preserved.
Yeah. I'm glad to cut that thing off.
My little grandson, he's three years old, he picked up a worm the other day and showed me, and I said, oh, you found a worm, he said, no, it's a caterpillar, and it was green, so he said, it's a John Deere caterpillar.
John Deere.
To him, there is no color green, it's all John Deere.
Isn't it kinda like ACCO?
Are they a lobbying group, be like National Association of Congress? Be MACO?
Oh, like MACO, yeah. Are they a lobbying group?
Yes. That's why they're bringing them in, on the Sheriff Association, bringing them in for two weeks, we're trying to tell you to see them at water class.
That's the end of this fiscal year, so we'll wait till we get all, out of the way, and there's not as many of the others.
Yes, four nine.
Four, four, two, six?
Four.
Five, four, four, because my four, four, nine.
Hardly remember all those numbers.
Where's this at?
That's his address. It's just a five, one, two, three, four, five, there. I didn't look them up.
That's a carry. And this one?
Trust me, third chair to me, I do want to go to that.
That's Dan's deal.
Can you let the message on the weekend?
Carry deal.
Look, it's by the lake.
That's a Dan's.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a Dan's.
Is that a road car? Car car?
Yeah, that's a Dan's. Andre's supposed to get with Andre on that. He's supposed to cover.
We had to use at the lake.
He's actually here today.
Who is?
Andre.
Is where?
Uh, he was at the barn this morning and he got the P O for whatever he's working on this week, I guess. This lady was the one that they just mentioned. That's the, uh, email. Did you want to turn that?
I'll let you know.
This is his response. This is his response to my email word forward. And the only person I can think that it might be is this guy. That Denver Island, I couldn't find his address.
Who?
This has one of the trustees. It was brought to his attention was a trustee. Only one in. So I looked up all three addresses on the sensor site and this shoots me into the one. But I guess he would have.
David is, he's working on that too.
And then Juan and Taylor texted you her message. And they discovered anything at AT and E. She said you came out and talked to her and.
Yeah.
The yard is overgrown.
Which one will you two go to?
Do you need to follow up on that?
Yeah, you follow up.
Someone use that app?
There's my memory.
No, the new ones. But we're waiting till we get through with these before I get them out.
Okay.
I have one more document. Hopefully decide. Uh, that my assistant is Brenda's, I'll be right back. It's emailing to Shelley, so we can print it there.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, boy, my knee's sore.
Hmm, it's bad.
Ah, this is.
Is it wet?
No.
It's not wet?
Got bad days on it now.
Ooh. You have to be careful and don't bump it.
It actually, it doesn't, where, right where it's at doesn't hurt. It's right there. It doesn't hurt. Way up here, there's muscle and there's calf muscle. And the longer I sit here, the worse it's getting.
Yeah, in one spot.
Yeah. Yeah. Get home, get ice back. Lisa said you go past that.
Did you get a picture yet? Kind of hurting on the road.
Okay.
Okay. You gotta listen to the one.
I definitely do. Seems later than ten thirty. A dreary day. I, I wish it rained.
You did this.
Tell you what, down by Fort Smith yesterday, we ran through rain both directions. Heavy rain. They said they got, what'd you say, Jeanie? Over an inches in Oklahoma City?
Inch, inch and three quarter. And it's pouring there today.
That's awesome.
It's, yeah, we're gonna get some more of it.
I thought we were done.
No, that was last year's. Now we getting this year.
Now we getting the regular year. Here comes Eric Deco.
Art Deco. Again. Deco, 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 Deco.
Mighty artist. How are you?
You're welcome, mate. Don't get it? Want to put something on the wall? I think you've done a great job. There you go. No, no.
He's just being ugly today. Have you noticed?
You, you don't really. It's just like this today.
How many doors did you work at first?
Uh, first one and the second. Probably, I don't know, five or six when we built the kind of long. Work bench.
Didn't this maze at the Catusa artists, I don't know what you know that.
Why?
Because, uh.
Oh, because they work Tuesday through, uh, Friday.
And did you care if I go out on the bridge inspections?
No, I think it's a good idea. Get you some, uh, go down to the Bass Pro Shop or somewhere, get you some waders.
No, I wasn't doing that part of it.
Then what good is it to go out there unless you're down, unless you have boots on the ground, in the water with the snakes? Get the snake proof ones too.
Snakes are as scary as the spiders would be.
I just take my shoes off and tie off of them.
I wear waders.
Do you really? I got rubber boots. I occasionally ask them.
Well, I mean.
Right now, you don't have to worry too much.
Yeah, not now. Right now.
Robin, where exactly is that New York? What's it close to there in Catusa?
I just put.
It's on time. Same, same recycling? It's right by there? Oh, that way.
You know what I did one time though? I misjudged on how deep the water was.
Yeah, do you wonder?
It's above, well, I didn't, but it went above the waders. It was terrible.
And just a reminder, we still need a picture of you with those high tracks for all the arms for Celecia's story.
Oh, good.
So if you're out there and I know.
Yeah.
Was there anything else? Any projects for this week?
Yeah, we have a lot of projects this week.
Oh, I know, but was there?
I can't help it if I try to build a good working relationship with the liberal media. She's not saying anything, she's just smiling.
Just ignoring you, yeah?
Yeah. Celecia, you know that, uh, your husband filled me in on some things, don't you? He said that you, one of your biggest pet peeves was to be called liberal media. Can you believe he told me that? Do you know when he told me? You know when we were out there on that fire and you were out looking for a good shot, walking through the woods? Him and I were standing over there at the point of beginning.
Breaking beer.
No. He told me. He told me a lot of things about you. Can you believe that?
Some of them good too, Celecia.
No, actually, they were all good that he gave me. Yeah, he really does, he really does like you.
Okay.
He may love you, but I mean, he really likes you. But he was telling me, he said, you really want to get her? And I said, well, first I'm like, why are you telling me this? And he says, tell her she works for the liberal media. That'll st- fire. So now you know ever since then why I say that to you constantly.
I'll make sure I thank him this evening when I see him.
Oh, I never thought about that. You're, now Matt's in trouble. I like him.
It's true too. The progress is a liberal paper. Did you need to answer that? But we're not doing it.
Um, no, I think that's my last thing for now.
I'll take the other stuff as it comes up.
Okay, thank you. You did a great job, Robin.
Thank you.
Obviously, there's one wrong in here because he went looking.
Never pass up a coffee, do we?
No. Take it when you get it.
Yes.
Very loved that.
Even if it's for a different person.
First time I. Oh, yeah. When you get to a spot through, I lied to you, I got four more documents. They just, four more copies of the same thing. This is the actual one that's going to be filed or you can't accept the beneficial.
We're on the new year now now.
That's a good deal.
The first we signed was a resolution. This is the actual, the actual sentence. Oops. I'll be sorry that. That includes. Don't need three.
And also the.
And Robin said four. Thank you, sir. Thank you. And Robin, I give you.
Well, we just need two seven.
No, he go with this too.
And you go get ice on your knee.
It's after thirty-six. Just quit rapping about it. Yeah.
Would you tell him, don't be such an anger out?
I don't know why he's being so mean to that.
I'll tell you why. He just. He just.
He's on a warpath.
Oh, there's one that'll wake you up.
Which one?
Three hundred and nine thousand.
Yeah. Yeah, that one. Thank you again. Excuse me, Celecia. I'm not in a setting. You're not texting Matt right now, are you? Oh, okay.
Now she'll wait for it. They don't own these? No. All of them in cars, surely.
That's the last of these.
It's the last of these.
Yeah, that's what she told me this morning because now that.
Yeah.
These are vaxxers?
Yes.
Going out there more?
Yes.
You have some? I think it is. When did they start those?
Seventy-four eighty.
Seventeen.
Are they always seventy?
Seventy-four eighty.
Well, since I've been able to turn this.
Really?
They're, by the way.
So they're always. They've already done it?
Well, yeah, there should be a couple of them.
It's Cal Pro, must be a T.
Hey, Helen, Helen, but did you ever, did you notice how they did the words?
Oh, yeah, they're charging for words if you want to get a chance.
Yeah. What do you think of this?
Who's that?
Fifteen cents.
It was all likely.
It was all likely.
Did Nelson go back in there?
Uh, I didn't see. I just saw him run through the door.
Take it a break?
That's Roy that just walked out.
Roy Orbison?
I almost called him Roy today.
I know, I know I have before.
Said, Miss Roy.
I do occasionally.
I do occasionally too. Sonia said, her last name's Reddy and her son, when he was in baseball. They used to call him Otis. Otis Reddy.
Otis Reddy.
And Otis Reddy is famous for what song? Sitting on the dock of the bay?
On the dock of the bay.
Yeah.
Don't you solve, yeah.
I remember that song too.
I think that's his signature song.
Otis Reddy?
That's right, I wasn't alive.
Don't you ever listen to oldies but goodies?
Oh. I listen to C one oh four four five.
The Edge.
The Edge.
Yeah.
I have satellite radio so I can listen to any kind of song I want.
KMD.
Never more day than yourself. You gotta quit that.
I never listened to it. But I remember them talking about that.
Well, KMD's about, that's actually what I listen to mostly.
I used to listen to it when Stan the Joke Man was on there.
Roy Mercer was on there.
Yeah.
I called, hey, speaking of that, I called up.
That big a boy, are you?
Daryl Yoder. I called up Daryl Yoder because I went over, I went over prior to buy a dog kennel. And I was going to cut back through and the bridge was out. And there was a, there was a hand painted sign that says, Bridge Out. But I thought there was a section line before that bridge, so I drove down there. And it was out, so I turned around, you know. I called, I called him and I said, I told him, I said, hey, you got an illegally painted sign up here. It just went on and on. And he said, do we? Probably got it from Rogers County. I said, you know who it is? It, I mean, after a while. He said, yeah. Said, you're going to have to come up with a new voice. Called you.
It's so quiet. Check it out, George Mau.
Yeah. Pretty quiet.
How many purchase orders do we have?
I don't know. How many purchase orders do we have this on here?
I'm not sure. This is general, so they're all theirs.
Where'd they change the lock at? Is that in jail?
How's that?
It looks to me like overdue. I'm not sure.
How's the E O C project coming?
I think they should, what'd he say? It's more than they're pulling wire?
What's up?
I'm gonna go get some, uh. I'm gonna go set it going, get some stuff to laminate for, uh, crease it. I'm gonna say they got. A ribbon bar timestamp machine, they're getting.
Yeah, they are, okay.
So. Best, alright?
Yeah, getting the model number to take with you and everything.
Is it the same one?
Yeah, old right there.
Let me see that one. That's got a ton of money on it, obviously, that's been.
Yes, we did.
Do you guys know when they're gonna put the new X three scanner machine thing in use? I saw it was standing out there.
They have one, uh, they've got one out there, and they, they brought it in the other day. But I don't see it setting out.
I think they're waiting on something.
The scanner, the.
Scanner, yeah.
Where they spit your purse and stuff in there. I think they're waiting on it to come in. I guess that one over there doesn't work. I understood it.
No, I quit them. They quit them a while back. It was pretty old. Is that all? So close.
But it's getting, see, this is one cent, and there's not that many, so.
Any word on when the auditors are gonna be done?
I talked to them the other day, they, they really, hardly said, you know, just, I don't know. I said anything about that, oh, I don't know. They sardined all.
Is that all?
Get the damn it. Yeah, these, I think all of these are just the, please. So, I enjoy it.
I wish she said please to you all the time, she was telling me, saying. Thank you, sir.
Just when you think you're about done, here comes Sonia with another folder.
At least you know what I've been doing, huh?
That's true.
All week long, it never lets up, does it?
Back before they instituted the purchase order, how did they? How'd they pay the bills back then?
Now, I might be old, but I'm not that old.
They had purchase orders for many, 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 many years.
But before.
They probably just paid them back then.
With what, though? Did they just carry around a checkbook, or?
I don't know.
That's before the eighties, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was in the eighties.
Eighties changed everything.
In my space. I'm kidding, you, you gonna look at anything going to you?
She's just seeing if she still lies about your name.
Actually, I was looking to see if they were here with stamps, but I really haven't seen them.
You've missed them.
No.
They already went there. They were, they're cool. I believe we got a handle on that.
Let's see. Right?
I think it's.
Excuse me.
What'd you handle?
Red stamps. At least for the commissioners. I saw a few go through here earlier.
Hey, is there any word on the election from last year? You guys heard, has legal come back with any kind of an opinion on that?
Haven't heard a word. Not, I mean, not a update of any kind. What does she do? I see her in here all the time.
She works for Tom across the street.
Oh, okay, so she's always.
She's bringing documents back from.
I see, I see her in here all the time, getting stuff.
She's Denny, Denny Haddix's granddaughter.
Who?
Denny Haddix's granddaughter. On Sooner Carpet.
Yeah, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
They always, all, they all go to that NRA banquet.
Yeah.
Well, she may all, I don't know.
Yeah, she was there.
He has quite a few granddaughters.
Yeah, she was there.
Denny does?
Yes, Denny's, uh, one of the officers, I believe.
For?
The NRA, the, like, the local.
Oh, yeah, he is.
Mm-hmm.
Also sells, also sells carpet.
That's one, that's one of his granddaughters that comes in here all the time. She works for Tom, attorney.
Tom, uh, Williams?
Tom Williams, thank you.
Did Scars retire?
Yes.
Yes.
I heard that he did.
And I forgot about that little retirement reception, and I had that little card right by my computer, and it got knocked down, and I forgot to go. Mike, that young lady's daddy just walked by. He's building home for Major Dan Luna.
Oh, yes?
Mm-hmm.
It's on the edge room.
He's still hanging.
On his gloves.
See, I don't know.
Yeah.
All that's sitting on there was two feed scoops.
It makes a thing.
Here. Now, we put a four drive, a four sleeve, and big cans, and we take that. I was thinking, oh, someone. Thinking it was something else.
Yep, you got one.
Did you see where the intern, NTSB, I do, I'm not reporting the names of the pilots from the ASEAN airport. Have you seen it?
Oh, my gosh.
He's an intern, and he didn't check this source.
Almost.
Beginning of the.
Is that all of them?
That's all of them. Said, did you see where the, there was an intern for the NTSB that reported the names of the ASEAN pilots in the crash last week? And he was duped, he didn't look at the names.
I heard about that on this.
And that went out in the national media. I mean, that was reported as the pilots' names.
Yeah, fly too low, weight too much.
No, these are worse.
These are worse.
Yeah, these aren't the, these are the ones that went out. Some intern.
Way too low.
That's not funny.
No.
I mean, it is, but it's not.
Yeah, you do.
Hey, you'll be fine.
Sonia, did you say this is the end?
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Kurt, would you like some more water?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
How are you? They now do that?
How?
Who makes that check? We do.
We.
So doesn't your, I mean, Treasury doesn't make that, so doesn't make the check?
Yeah, it's, okay.
How do you? I don't know. What's that?
This one? What's it for?
Very cool. Very cool.
If we do that, are we gonna stop paying everybody twice a month?
I don't know.
Maybe.
That's a lot more, like, bookkeeping and paperwork.
Do it for one month.
He's been out a big yet.
Is this all, uh, overseen by Judge Condrance? So, they're just wanting reimbursement checks in the middle of the month, is that what you guys, what do you guys normally, usually do with payroll?
No, reimbursement checks.
One of them is payroll. But it's not in the, in the normal cycle of payroll?
Okay. Item number twenty, do we have a motion? I'm sorry, item twenty-three, payment of purchase orders from all departments, do we have a motion?
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Hail.
Aye.
Motion's been carried, approve all purchase orders.
What about the others? Were they signed?
Yeah, two.
No, okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Thacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Hail.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at?
Eleven, eleven, eight AM.
Eleven, eleven.